2024, I'd like to call this meeting to order. City of Mableton, City Council meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Owens.
President.
Councilmember District One, Ron Davis.
Present.
Councilmember District Two, Damiola Doppo.
Present.
Councilmember District Three, Mayor Pro Tem, Keisha Jeffcoat.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember District Four, Patricia Auak.
Present.
Councilmember District Five, T.J. Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember District Six, Deborah Herndon.
Present.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Now that we have established a quorum, I'd like to have Councilman Davis lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us bow. Oh gracious and most heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for being who you are, Father, our Lord and our Savior. Father, we just thank you for your grace and mercy. We pray right now that your mighty hand watch over us, guide us, strengthen us, protect us, Father God. Let us come together as a community in unity, Father God. Give us all the wisdom, Father God, as elected officials to operate as you would have us operate, in integrity, in sincerity, Father God, in truth, Father God. We just thank you right now. In thy name we bless you for the guidance you will always provide us. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Item four is pleasure allegiance. With that, I'd like to ask our Mayor Pro Tem, Keisha Jeffcoat, if you could lead us in pleasure allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbelied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Council, we're going to move on to item five, which is the approval of the agenda. You all have been provided a copy of it before the meeting. Being the fact that we have quite a bit of things on the agenda today with some competing priorities, I know of visitors that we have, I would like to propose, with the approval of the agenda, a slight change. With that, I'd like to ask that we move item, for new business, item 12C and item 12D to the top of the new business order. And with that, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda with moving item C and D to the top of new business.
I make a motion. Go ahead. I make a motion to approve the agenda with item 12C and D moved to the top.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
So moved. All those in favor of approving the agenda, with the exceptions noted, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. I do appreciate it. We're going to move now to item six, which is the presentations, acknowledgements, and proclamations. We do have a couple of letters and proclamations this evening. I would like to start off with a couple that really spill over from our last meeting. If you guys recall, we celebrated our first year anniversary just a few weeks ago, and there was a couple of acknowledgements and letters that we received that was not presented in our last meeting, so I do want to make note of those. The first one is, there's a letter in an agenda packet, unless someone knows different, I think that's an actual mistake. It says, "A letter from John Ossoff for the first anniversary of cityhood." I think that was actually from Senator Reverend Warnock. So with that said, I want to read the letter from Senator Warnock briefly. It's dated June 1st of 2024. "To the City of Mableton, welcome to the City of Mableton's first anniversary celebration. This is a fantastic milestone and a wonderful opportunity to celebrate all things that make Mableton the vibrant community that it is. Events such as these are important reminders of the power of community. How coming together with our neighbors can foster unity through times of adversity and prosperity alike. I thank each of you who have dedicated your time, resources, and energy to make this festival or make this a festive occasion as possible. Both as the newest and largest city in Cobb County, the City of Mableton has an exciting and bright future ahead. May the spirit of togetherness and pride continue to guide your city towards a better tomorrow. I pray for your community's continued success, and please do not hesitate to let my office know how we can ever be of service to you. Keep the faith and keep looking up. U.S. Senator Raphael Warnock." And so, the second one is a proclamation for the first year anniversary from Representative Terry Cummings. And I will give you an abbreviated version of this one because it's quite longer. But as you know, State Representative Terry Cummings is the state representative for Mableton District 39. And in this resolution, official resolution from the State House, recognizing June 1st, 2024 as the City of Mableton Day for other purposes. Whereas the City of Mableton encompasses most of the southern part of Cobb County, Georgia, has a population exceeding $78,000, 78,000 residents, making it the most populous city in the county. Whereas the vision to create the City of Mableton was realized through Bill 839, which passed both chambers of the Georgia Assembly and was signed by Governor Brian P. Kemp. Whereas on June 1st, 2023, the City of Mableton officially commenced operations on which the leadership of its inaugural mayor, Dr. Michael Owens, as well as its dedicated council members, Ron Davis, Damiola Doppo, Keisha Jeffcoat, Patricia Auak, T.J. Ferguson, and Deborah Herndon. And whereas the establishment of the City of Mableton represents significant milestone in the history of Mableton, fostering a sense of community, enhancing local governance, and providing a framework for future growth and development. Now therefore be it resolved that I, State Representative Terry Cummings, do hereby recognize June 1st, 2024, as City of Mableton Day in celebration of the city's first anniversary, so resolved this June 1st, 2021, or 2024, sorry. Thank you. So a huge thank you to Representative Cummings and to our state Senator, our U.S. Senator, Reverend Warnock. Thank you. And for the third proclamation that we have this evening, we actually have a presentation due to our city manager, Bill Tanks. It is certificate in diversity, equity, inclusion. That's going to be presented by Mr. Freddie Broom of the Georgia Municipal Association. Freddie, you mind coming up? Please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening, sir.
Freddie Broom from Georgia Municipal Association. Thank you for allowing us to come to make this special presentation to your city manager, William Bill Tanks, tonight. Mr. Tanks completed our Municipal Leader Diversity Equity Income Certificate Program. This is an eight-month program that we put together to equip municipal leaders of foster state with the importance of understanding how to create vibrant communities that embrace diversity, create equitable opportunities, promote inclusion, and create a culture where everyone has a sense of belonging. During this process, the first thing we teach everyone is the importance of what diversity really is. And so when we say diversity, diversity does not look like anyone, diversity looks like everyone. And so that's the first thing we teach them, to be able to go back to their communities and find ways to serve everyone in their communities. So their lessons go from inclusion leadership to emotional intelligence. They get also training in public safety, community stakeholder engagement, economic development, and human resources development. And then the last part of it is they have to present a capstone project of what's a project they would like to see in their city that helps make their community more inclusive and enhance the part of life to everyone that lives, works, and plays in their community. So tonight, we're here to recognize city manager Bill Tanks for completion of this program. He joins, right now, we have 58 leaders from across the state of Georgia that has completed this program, so he now joins 58 leaders, being an awardee of the certificate of Municipal Leader Diversity Equity Income and Certificate.
Thank you, Mr. Broom, and congratulations, Mr. Tanks, on that certificate. How many hours is that again? How many hours? Eighty hours?
Eight.
Eight. A lot of hours. Thank you, Mr. Broom and GMA, for you guys showing up as well. We definitely do appreciate it. And now, one other item before we move on from this section, is I want to take a moment to congratulate our own Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Keisha Jeffcoat. As many of you know, many of us have other jobs and serve in other capacities. Ms. Jeffcoat is a veteran and still active member with the United States Marine Corps. Oh, she could only wish. I'm sorry.
Easy.
She is an outstanding, award-winning, decorated, highly decorated, member of the United States Army. And now through her decades of service to the United States Army and to the United States government as a whole, she recently completed the Senior Field Grade Officer Training, which was an 18-month class. So in addition to keeping a regular full-time job, to being a caring family member, to being a dedicated member to this community and this council, she also obviously goes above and beyond with her service to this country. So I would like to officially and formally congratulate her on the Senior Field Grade Officer Training.
You know I don't like that kind of stuff.
I guess that means something to... Oh, I already messed up. I'm not going there yet. All right, so with that being said, we're going to move on. Don't have any appointments for this evening. Public hearing, there's no public hearings this evening, but we do have item nine, which is public comment. So Madam Clerk, do we have public comment cards this evening?
Yes, I do. I have five cards. Just want to remind everyone, there's a two-minute time limit, and we don't go back and forth with answering questions or anything, because this is a business meeting and we have a lot of business to attend to tonight. So I will call your name, and you go toward the podium, and then I'll call who's next, and you can be ready to go to the podium. The first one is Monique Lester. Monique Lester. And then after Monique, we'll have Angela Nguyen.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
City council members. I'm here today basically for the community I stay in, so far as basically Riverside Parkway. I've been here before with the same, some of the same suggestions. Basically, I have, my thoughts are that the apartments on Riverside Parkway are basically need to be condemned. They are not livable. And I want to say that it should be something, a resolution for the people who may cannot afford to stay in other places. I haven't seen the Mableton come up with a plan or put it in their agenda about housing for elderly, people who can't afford the high-rise or other places to stay. So my concern about the City of Mableton is to put something in place for people who maybe can't afford to live, will not, don't want to live in a dump, and would love to live somewhere else, maybe. So I just would love to see something happen in that area with the apartments, because these apartments are not even worth saving, I don't think. It's just my opinion. And I guess this is why I'm up here, is to state my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Angela Nguyen of District Two, and following Angela is Bobby Laimont.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here for Sello Advantage, where I live at. I had a very bad maintenance problem Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all the way up to Monday, sewage backup. There was nobody to call, so I was calling, I was calling the fire department, they couldn't do anything, sheriff department, not sheriff, but police, they couldn't do anything. No one could do anything, were no maintenance number or anything. So I'm just trying to see, in situations like this, who do we go to reach out to? Even the apartment where I live at, no maintenance, no, what you call it, emergency number to call. So we had the dill sewage, and I had my grandkids there. I just want to know, in a situation like this, what kind of welcoming place we have that people to do such a thing? So it was a hurtful thing. I even got pictures of it to show where I was dipping sewage and stuff was running everywhere. Lost a lot of stuff, but I'm just saying, what can we do and who do we turn to if no maintenance department, nobody to turn to? Where do we go?
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Can I, what's the name of that apartment complex? Thank you.
Okay. Bobby Laimont is from District Two, and following her is Monica Delancey.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I reside at Premier Apartments. I moved in October. By January, I started fighting water leaks and no working heat. It took my husband to tape off the, it's called a prelim, I think it is, at the very top of your air handler. But since January, I have bought a water leak in the kitchen, the bathroom, and now the utility room. I put in my last work order for the utility room water leak on May 9th. It took them almost two weeks to come out, look at it, take pictures, and never come back. Since May, my husband is fighting a lung infection. It's not only affecting us, it's affecting my animals. I don't mean to crack. But this apartment complex, they don't care. Their office is aware of it, corporate is aware of it. I just think they take advantage of renters, you know? But they're quick to, like, evict, but they don't want to fix the issues, if that makes sense. And I just think that, you know, and I did read up to where Georgia doesn't recognize mold as a problem. It's definitely a problem, because I mean, that causes a lot of issues inside your body. And also, there's a mold in our AC handler. So therefore, when I'm running the AC, the mold is just going all through the apartment. But that's the main issue, is the mold. So, thank you.
Thank you. Monica Delancey of District Two, and then the last card following Monica is Daniel Campus. And he did not put his district.
Good evening, Monica Delancey, Riverside Parkway, District Two. It was so brave of you guys to come up and share your concerns about different apartment complexes in the Riverside area. All the apartments that was mentioned sit in District Two. I want to share that Atlanta Journal-Constitution released a report on dangerous dwellings back in 2022. And of that, there were listed as 300 Riverside apartments, that's District Two. Then it was listed 575, which was formerly Hunter's Grove Apartments, District Two. Lake Crossing Apartments, District One. Millwood Pines, which is Cielo 35 now, they changed their names because they know what's happening. That's District Two. Premier Apartments, District Two. Riverside, Residence of Riverside, which is known as Parkview, District Two. Sierra Forests, which is now Mableton Ridge, District Two. Silver Creek Crossing Apartments, which was Kingsley Village Apartments, District Two. And the Parkton Apartments, District Two. Okay? There are about another five apartments listed for Cobb County, but they're located by Osborn High School, as well as Delk Row. And the ongoing pattern is, all of these apartments are located in areas where the apartments are over 30 years of age, okay? So we already know it's hard to keep apartments up and going after you reach a certain age, we know this. But when we speak about Kingsley Village, which changed its name to Silver Creek Crossing Apartments, in 2022, when I sat down with the regional manager and shared with her the concerns about the apartment complex and how we were working together to overcome some things, all I got was a non-renewal lease. I was told I had to leave, so that's retaliation. So I'm dealing with a three-year eviction case because I speak up. That's going to Superior Court August the 12th. So basically, when residents called me, I had to tell them, hey, you guys are going to have to speak up as well. You're going to have to not be afraid. I can pay the fees. I can do these things, because that's what I'm going to do. But at the same time, I want you guys to speak up, because it's not right that you've been treated like a third-class citizen. And now, in the city limits of Mableton, I would like to know, Mayor Owens, I know you've responded back to me, but I would like to know, when can you come to the office with us and have these conversations with the property managers? And as you can see, it's more than just one apartment complex, but I'm glad you mentioned it. Most of these apartment complexes own other apartment complexes, so they're grouped together. But again, when you talk about the City of Mableton, the City of Mableton has about 55% rental occupancy. So we got to do something. We got to stop talking about wait and see. We already know the writing's on the wall. It's time for some departments to come down. But the plan needs to be in action. What are we going to do about these families? How are we going to protect these children? Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Delancey, I did send you an email, and I sent you an email asking for the contact information for all the apartments. Could you please send that to me? Thank you.
Daniel Campus. And this is the last card, and he did not say what district. If you could say the district you're from.
I am, oh, good afternoon, buenas tardes. Mayor, President of the City Council. I am not a Cobb County resident. I'm actually a community organizer representing Poli Latinex, as you guys have a folder on. I actually spoke with Mayor Owens regarding to our organization providing some type of resources to the community of Mableton. We focus on three major campaigns, which is environmental, which I'm hearing, there's a lot of environmental issue, which consists of housing, safe water, et cetera. We also focus on economic justice. We also focus on immigration justice. We are here to provide resources, help to our community regardless of skin, nationality, and background. All of these campaigns affect us one another or all together. I've spoken with Mayor Owens regarding to providing citizenship clinics to our U.S. residents, free of cost. We also provide community events regarding to paid leave. Do any of y'all know what paid leave is? Most of us don't. One in a million chooses their job over their health or the health of a loved one. Mothers are going back to work two weeks after giving birth. Is that fair? Third world countries in Africa are giving 82 weeks of paid leave to mothers to take care of their newborn. Last, or this month, is Father's Month, Father's mental health. We all know that, and we all try to do our best. So we want to collaborate with you guys, provide these resources to our community members, especially the Latinos, because the language barrier is an issue. So we're here for you guys. We're the only organization that is pushing out to Cobb County. And if one can do that, I know the rest of the Latino Coalition are going to come out to help out as well. So you guys have resources, surveys regarding to small businesses, paid leave, childcare. Childcare is an issue as well. The accessibility of childcare in Georgia is bad. The affordability is bad. Childcare is an issue that every parent goes through. I'm a parent of two. Luckily, my job allows me to work from home, but there's parents that have to leave their job to take care of their kids. Georgia is considered a childcare desert. What are we doing? It takes one of us to do something. We have to inform our community, educate our community, and that's what I'm here for, to represent the Latina by everyone else, so that way, next year in a legislative session, we're able to advocate for everyone and not leave anyone behind. So, thank you. Gracias.
That's all of the cards, Mayor.
I'll take us to item 10. Consent agenda, which is item 10. Two items on the consent agenda, which is to June 5th, both of them relate to June 5th. One is the work session minutes, and the other's the regular minute, regular meeting minutes. So at this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
A motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. So moved. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it. Thank you. Move over to item 11, which is unfinished business. To my knowledge, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to move right to item 12, which is new business. If you guys will recall, we had an amendment to change the order of this, so what I'd like to do is go straight to item D, which is the consideration and approval of resolution authorizing the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System to move forward with the ordinance and other official documents established by the City of Mableton's defined benefit plan and 457 plan. So with that, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to open with that before we go to Ms. Warner?
Yes, as you recall, back in, well, starting last year, we started talking about retirement plans and getting our life and health and insurance and other benefits in place. The retirement plan is still kind of hanging out there that we needed to decide on. And with several meetings with GMA, the council had given me some direction on what to get a study on, and we asked for a study from the Georgia Municipal Association. And council had directed to do the normal retirement age of 62 and a half, official 62, early retirement 55 plus 10 years. And I had direction to have five years vested and have a cost of living of 5%. That was just some of the variables that we had to consider to have a formula to create our retirement plan. So the Georgia, excuse me, Michelle Warner and Segal Company, the actuaries of the Georgia Municipal Association, ran the numbers. And they are here tonight. Michelle Warner is here, the director, and she would be glad to explain and give you a summary of their proposed retirement plan. Would you like for Michelle to come forth? Michelle Warner is right here. Just come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Michelle Warner. I'm the Director of Retirement Administration for the Georgia Municipal Association. And as Ms. Hyatt mentioned, we did do this cost study for, based on some plan design elements that were agreed upon. And we did two different cost studies with two different benefit multipliers for you to choose from. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, or if you'd rather ask questions.
Mr. Mayor, I think we might just talk about the process.
Okay.
We plan to have a future work session where the council can get more details on specifics.
Right, so let me just, I'll just explain that once we've nailed down a plan design, then our legal department would put together the plan documents. Those plan documents are also an ordinance, and that's a general assembly thing, so you would need to approve it the same way you approve any other ordinance. would need to approve it the same way you approve any other ordinance. But, you know, it's, we're middle of June now, or towards the end, oh, end of June, my goodness. You know, we could probably get a plan started for you as early as October. Just depends on how quickly we move on it. And then, so once we have the plan documents, then you would approve them here and pick an effective date for the plan to start, and we would just need another, probably another little updated census, but you don't have a lot of employees yet, so not a lot of work there. And we would just get everything started, get your staff trained on how the retirement plan works, and do some employee education, whatever the city needs from GMA, we're happy to provide.
Thank you. I know early on, there was a lot of discussion about the number of employees we have and that we'll be obviously adding more employees. Do we feel comfortable with where we are now with our projected employee count and how that could potentially impact the numbers, or is...
Oh, well, I will say this, that, you know, the cost study came out with, you know, they come up with an annual contribution, because the way this works, the plan would be valued once a year. We would look at whoever you've got in the plan at the time, active participants, what their salaries are at that time, you know, that kind of thing, do an evaluation of the plan, and every year that would take place to come up with what contribution was required for future years to keep the funding going.
So that's a one-year review or snapshot at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
And so right now, with the cost studies we did, we're looking at four-point-seven percent or five-point-five-two percent of payroll. So that number is probably gonna not change as you hire people, because that's a percentage of payroll. And so as you bring on people, your contribution obviously will go up because now you're paying for more people, but that percentage ought to be roughly what we're looking at from year to year. Now, of course, market performance can change that. Experience can change that, but even with a bad year for the market, markets come back, and so even if you have a bad year, one year, you're bound to be picking up those assets again the next year. So I can't, you know, the contribution amount isn't necessarily gonna stay the same from year to year, but what we're looking at is hopefully keeping that percentage of payroll roughly the same, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Thank you very much. Just let us know whenever you need us to come back, okay?
Will do. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go to item twelve C now, which is consideration approval of the agreement with Grice Consulting Group to conduct services for the city of Mapleton's comprehensive plan twenty forty-five. This consideration of approval allows the mayor to negotiate an existing agreement in substantial form for the actual comprehensive plan. With that being said, Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add? I know Mr. Grice is here, or Mr. Funney, sorry.
Well, so we had the council vote on our last meeting, a four-three vote for this election. Now, this is just a vote to formalize the contract. And you should have, our city attorney has reviewed the contract, and it's prepared now for signature. So tonight, you would just vote to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Grice Consulting for the purposes of comprehensive planning services.
I know Mr. Funney is here.
Yeah, he's just here in case you have any questions. So we can probably, if you want to just go, if you want some questions, you could, or you can go straight into a motion.
Okay. So with that being said, then I'm just gonna, we'll go right ahead and entertain a motion to approve item twelve C.
Can I make a clarification to authorize the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form?
Yes, ma'am.
And then that gives us the ability, if we need to make any formatting or any minor adjustments that don't substantially change the form of this, it gives us that discretion.
And just for clarification, that is how it is documented here, right, in twelve C?
Okay.
Because it says, "Mayor, negotiate and execute agreement in substantial form."
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider an approve of agreement with Grice Consulting Group to conduct services for the city of Mapleton, comp plan, and mayor to negotiate and execute agreement in substantial form.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, comments on this matter?
Yes. I have actually a comment and a question. So our last city council meeting, we discovered that there was a flaw in some of the way that the choices came together, and I was kind of instructed not to really say a whole lot about it, but I thought maybe we would revisit, like, the initial selection process. There was a flaw in the way that that came about, because there was information, I know that I transmitted, that was not tabulated, for whatever reason, I don't know, technical issue. So I have a question on whether we have an opportunity to address that, because I kinda feel like the process needs to be, one, that is fair, for lack of a better word, I can't think of another word for that, but where it's a little bit more fair, because I just feel like there were mistakes that were made initially so that the composition and choice pool was kinda skewed, in my mind.
There was a question there, though?
Yeah.
What was the question?
My question is, are we going to address that at all, or are we just moving forward with a choice, even though the composition was skewed as a result of the flaws that happened in the beginning?
I mean, where we are right now, Councilwoman, is we're doing the consideration approval of this agreement. So while I hear and acknowledge your concern about that, that was really last meeting, where we should have brought that up and went through it.
I did.
And we voted. So I don't know the details. I wasn't privy, but...
Oh.
I didn't. Okay. Do you have comment?
Do we wanna go over the details of what happened?
That is not what's being up for discussion now.
Actually, there should be a point of order. There was a vote by the council on the selection. This is not, that's a discussion, but right now, I think the motion is to vote for the agreement. I'm willing to answer any questions, but the council did vote four-three for the selection.
Just procedurally, when we have issues like this, when is the appropriate time to have the discussion? Because we kinda didn't discuss it at the last meeting, because it was like, well, this is the motion that was made, and we never really talk about, when is it appropriate to have the discussion?
It was at the last meeting when we asked for a discussion. And to my recollection, this wasn't brought up during discussion.
Was it pertinent to, you know, I'd even asked, like, can this be discussed? And it was...
Yeah, if I could just provide additional procedural clarification. So you approved moving forward with this particular vendor at the last meeting, and the vote for tonight would be to actually approve the agreement that's before you. If you do have additional discussion, then a motion can be made. It can be a motion to approve, a motion to deny, a motion to defer. But after that motion is made, you then could have individual discussion on whether to approve the agreement, unless a motion is made to call the question. At that point, discussion would end if approved. Does that help clarify?
Okay. So can we discuss the reasoning on why we would vote not for this, or what procedurally happened to why we feel this wasn't a fair assessment or voting?
So my recommendation would be to put a motion on the floor, so that then you can then go into discussion on that motion.
Okay.
And then if you want discussion to stop after that point, then you would do a motion to call the question. And if approved, then discussion would stop at that point. But absent a motion to call the question, if you put a motion on the floor, you would have the right for discussion after that motion's made and before it's voted on.
And correct me if I'm wrong, a motion has been made?
A motion has been made.
Then you make a second, and then you go into discussion.
We are in discussion now, based on a motion that has been duly made and seconded.
Okay, good.
So with that, I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Grice Consulting Group to conduct services for the city of Mapleton's comprehensive twenty forty-five and allow the mayor to execute an agreement in substantial form, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let the record state that there was two nays, Councilwoman Herndon and Councilwoman Og. The motion passes six to two. With that, we will move on to, we'll catch back up with item twelve A. Twelve A is the second read on the ordinance of updating chapter five, updating chapter seven, Article Five, which is the hotel motel excise tax of the city of Mapleton's Code of Ordinance pertaining to hotel motel excise tax. This is the motion that takes us, that passed through the General Assembly, that the governor has signed, which basically moves our hotel motel tax from five percent to eight percent. Keep in mind that eight percent is what Cobb County levies for hotel motel tax. Our hotel motel tax was dropped down to five percent once we became a city. So to recapture that additional three percent, we had a bill go through the General Assembly, which was passed. Upon passing the General Assembly, or the state of Georgia requires us to come back to the council meeting and pass an ordinance to fully adopt that additional eight percent. So that is why we're here. This is where we're at. Currently, we had a first reading. This is the second reading. At this point in time, I would like to ask our attorney if there's anything else you have pertaining to the second reading of our ordinance for hotel motel tax.
No, Mayor, the recommendation would just be to approve, and if approved, it would go into effect August first of this year.
Thank you, ma'am. With that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to move forward with adopting the ordinance updating chapter seven, Article Five, the hotel motel excise tax for the city of Mapleton.
I would like to make a motion updating the ordinance for chapter seven, Article Five, hotel motel excise taxes of the city of Mapleton Code of Ordinance pertaining to hotel motel excise tax.
I second.
So moved and seconded. Any motion, I mean, any discussion, questions, comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of updating the ordinance of chapter seven, Article Five, for hotel motel tax, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, and it's passed. Ma'am?
Sorry. Mayor Owens, can we revisit twelve D? I think there was some misunderstanding on that one. There was a lot of conversation going on.
Sure.
When GMA was speaking, they were talking about what we had given them direction to run the plan on. And in order to get that plan moving, we need to approve the resolution to tell them to go forth and create the ordinance and the agreement. And that's what the resolution's for, is to tell them to begin, because it's a lot of paperwork and a large ordinance. So that's what we were trying to get to be done.
So at the conclusion of her presentation, what we really need at this point is approval of that resolution?
Yes, that they can move forward with the paperwork and the ordinance. And then that will come before you to vote on.
Okay.
They have to create it all. There's no way our attorney can do the ordinance or anything. It's all very detailed paperwork.
They have an ordinance. They have an ordinance prepared, correct?
No, not yet. They probably have a template of an ordinance, but they will attach all of our paperwork and everything to the ordinance. And then we vote on it, and it becomes our official contract for the retirement plan. So this is just to authorize you to move forward.
Sure.
To tell them to start their paperwork.
Understood, understood. That's my fault. Doesn't oversight there. Members of the council, what we need to do is actually entertain a motion for twelve D, which is consideration approval of the resolution authorizing the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System to move forward with an ordinance that they would create and other financial documents to establish the city's defined benefit plan and a four fifty-seven plan. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion for the consideration and approval of the resolution authorizing the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System to move forward with an ordinance and other official documents to establish city of Mapleton's defined benefit plan and a four fifty-seven plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Being moved and seconded, I'll call the question. All those in favor of consideration of approving, sir. Oh, do you have discussion?
Yeah, discussion. So once they bring this back, do we have to go through two more reads of what they bring back?
I think we do have to do two reads on an ordinance. So we're looking several months down the road before we can even have our retirement plan going, so, yes.
And that's why she said by October. We could have some done.
Yes. They will draft it, but we will have to adopt it as a normal ordinance.
Right. Okay, sorry.
That's fine. Any other discussion, questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the approval of the resolution authorizing Georgia Municipal Benefits System to move forward with an ordinance and other official documents to establish the city of Mapleton's defined benefit plan and four fifty-seven plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. And I'm assuming, Madam Clerk, you will get back with GMA and...
Yes.
...before. Okay. Thank you. I do appreciate that. That takes us to item E, which is consideration and approval of American Engineers Agreement for Design and Construction of six-one-one-six Mapleton Parkway, and allows the mayor to negotiate and execute this agreement. Mr. Manager, you want to give us an update or summation of this approval?
Yes, sir. We have, I sure have, as Kelly here from Taylor Townsend here, you come up. This is an agreement, where we noticed we have secured space at six-one-one-six Mapleton Parkway to begin having workspace for our code enforcement team and our plan reviewer. You can go up. And this is gonna authorize the mayor to execute the contract to go into agreement, for them to do construction management. They've already done design, and I'll let Kelly speak to where we are in that phase and what happens. But once you approve this, this allows them to start pulling permits and going, getting the work started, getting the contractors, so we can get the place built out. And I imagine Kelly can kinda give you all a timeline of what it would take and the whole process of having to build, so.
Kelly Brown with Turner and Townsend.
Is your mic on?
Hello?
Yep.
Yep. Kelly Brown with Turner and Townsend here. We should have the plans done by the end of August, which means permitting in September, and then construction October to the end of December.
And I do have concept. We have some concept plans here, if you want to see them. I was gonna actually show this. It's actually in another setting, but for right now, if they need to see it, I'll bring them out.
Kill more trees.
And Kelly, I'm sorry. She gave you one of the copies, huh?
Thank you. As you recall, we had the lead on one suite. The second has become available, and we found some ability to do some cost savings by combining the two. These two spaces will be connected, and they will allow us to have our code enforcement officers, our plan reviewers, and perhaps our business license folks in that space. Questions?
You said that they're gonna be connected now?
Yes, sir. They'll be connected.
Well, no, I see them. I just remembered that that was part of the conversation, that we weren't gonna connect it, but now we are.
Oh, yes, sir. So the plan not to connect them was a fire marshal recommendation to go in and get occupied, but they're confident with the minor... but they're confident with the minor adjustment, there was already a door there. When we went and saw the second suite, there was already a door there.
Oh.
So we realized it wouldn't be as complicated as we thought. And actually, there's going to be cost savings, we have all the contractors on the scene at the same time, you got your planners on the scene, instead of them having to come back and set up and do two different bathrooms, they'll be able to execute this as one.
That is correct. And the break room is in one of the spaces, so it makes sense to connect them.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The break room is being shared, so it makes sense to have the connections between the two spaces.
Yep, I see that.
And you said completion end of December, so.
End of December, yes, sir.
Does that mean January?
No. It will be December.
Okay.
We're going to try to push them to get done a little quicker than December.
That is correct.
City Manager?
But again, this is a resolution to authorize them to go ahead and enter into this phase where they would do contract and construction management and carry out the whole process oversight. And at the end, deliver us a place ready for our staff, employees to work. This would in effect be our operations, not administration, but our operations building.
Mr. Manager, my question, I guess around this design and layout, it looks definitely like it covers our need.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question, I was looking at the scope of services and what will be built out. I question the build out and around the physical security apparatus we'll have, whether there's secured access, secured space, badge access, which I'm assuming we're going to have. Can you speak a little bit to the security components of that as it relates to this layout?
We talked about the engineering and that cost, and so right now, there's options that we could key code the doors and give codes. There's different options where you can have, employees can have an access code and they have to patch a code to get through the door. And if an employee for some reason is no longer with us, we can change the code. That right there may be the most cost effective way, but if the council decides that they rather have badge access, we could, I think that's going to be very, from what I'm told, that's going to probably be a little more expensive than some of the technologies available just to localize and access with a security code that you punch in in the door, just like you would in Airbnb. You can go and punch in, they have doors like that now that they can insert into the door.
I would strongly ask that we look at a centralized badging system, because as we grow and as we look at potentially having other space, the ability to have a centralized system that controls the security of who gets in, and not just into the front, but into other secured areas maybe.
Yes, sir. Do you know that, Kelly?
Yes, I did. We can look into that, absolutely.
Thank you.
And the other, along those same lines, I don't see the cameras listed anywhere, security cameras around the office. And as I'm looking at the excluded from the scope of work, so do you have a low voltage, an IT person that's going to run all that cable and do all that sort of thing?
Well, the general contractor can hire someone to do that, yes, as a separate service.
But the way this works is the management firm goes out and finds contracts to do all the work, and you get the plumbers, electricians and all that. Now, we have not, I, that, to be honest with you, Mr. Ferguson, we did not include cameras in here, but that's the purpose of tonight for you all to review it. If that's a request, I will state that all that stuff can run the price up. So right now, as quoted, we don't have cameras, but we'd be glad to look at, Kelly, that's what we're here for now, if you would note.
Okay.
Security cameras and a central badge system.
What about external appearance? Do we have any type of agreement with the landlord or the building owner as far as making the place look nicer? I'm just asking, right, whether that signage, signage out front, painting, pressure washing, I mean, and if that falls onto us, that's fine, but I would like to know that.
No, I think within our lease agreement, which the city attorney has reviewed, there are terms on what we're responsible for and what they're responsible for. I'll be honest with you, I don't know it off the top of my head, but that is also incorporated in the lease, which we'll be discussing one of them later, this is two. But that could certainly be, make sure it's spelled out.
Okay, thank you.
So I have one last question, I'll be quiet. When I look at this, I see lobby intake on one side with reception, but you got to go through a door and I'm assuming a window there to get to reception. But on the other side, where it talks about the business license kiosk, there's a door. Where does that person sit that is doing the?
Are you talking about, if I'm looking at the file, that is 115 door, the door at 115?
Yes.
And you want to know where would someone sit?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm talking about 116. The front entrance is right there, 116A, top right.
Okay.
And then it says lobby, business license kiosk. Where is the person's desk? Is that 116?
No, sir, that is strictly for the public. When we talk with our, Nari, our business license clerk, we asked for her input, and she says during the heavy seasons, you could have a rush. And so instead of having people stand out in parking lots, having a long line around the door, we wanted to create enough lobby space where they could come in and have a seat there until someone could bring them back to discuss a specific issue about their business license. That kiosk is something that Ms. Nari wants to set up, that people can actually come in and get on the computer and process their business license with just minimum help. If they're not able to do it at home, we're trying to get everybody to go to the automated system. So what we want to do there is allow them, if they don't have a computer at home, they can't get to the library, and we don't have anyone to help them, we'll have staff there that can go out to the kiosk and help them process their occupational tax license. And so there's no seat necessary there at that 116, that is going to be the kiosk, I guess a stand with a laptop and the ability to go and do. I think right now, a few of you have had to meet some people at the library and show them how to process their business license. We'll have it centralized where they can do it right there. So no seat there at 116, those chairs on the wall are for lobby, for citizens that may need to wait. And if someone needs special attention, they will come to the back, be invited to the back right there at door, I think it is, I've got my glasses on.
116B?
116B, yes, sir. They'll come back, our staff will escort them. If you need to bring a group of people in, they will go into the conference room and have a discussion.
Okay, so then how are they going to alert the person?
The front is going to have a glass insert that gives visibility, so when we walk in, we will see people come in. We stress that we wanted some form of light and a visibility right there at the opening, there's an opening there that I think is designed where we'll be opening, we can hear and we can all, I mean, we can institute necessarily an identification, but right now, the plan is that when we walk in, people can see, if we're sitting back there, we can see people coming in.
Okay, I could go on, but.
Yeah, we can get into the details.
You've got to play around with that.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because I'm looking at it and I'm like, you're going to have people banging on the window?
No, sir, no, sir, no. No, this place, this is going to be staff, we're going to have, as you know, right now, we've established full open hours, which we'll announce on the website soon, right here at Epicenter. When this place is staff, it'll have open hours from 8:30 to 5:00. Staff will be, somebody will be in there. And the reason we have it joined is that they can support each other, code enforcement officers will be in the space, you'll have your business license folks in the space, and then if we need plan reviews, so they'll all be working there together. I don't plan to have that place abandoned or not staffed.
Is there a plan for a public restroom for anyone who visits and is waiting? All the restrooms?
No, those restrooms are designed for staff. We kind of want to give them a space where they feel secure and separated from the public. So we have a male and female bathroom and then one unisex bathroom next to the break room. But we did not design this, we only have about 3,200 square feet here, a little bit less than 4,000. We didn't design it to have public come in and use the bathrooms. But I'm quite sure if somebody had, if somebody really had to go, staff will take them back and let them use the bathroom. Any more questions? Kelly, you are, I think the next, if this is approved, you all will start your permitting process?
We would start, we would start movement on the plans into design development.
My only comment is, Mr. Manager, there's a lot of file cabinets I'm looking at here, and I don't know that we're going to plan on keeping that much paper unless a state or someone else says that we need to.
Those are records retention, Miss Clerk, those are the records retention room, and I think you know as we do our planning zone, we're bringing over some boxes. And there's going to be folks bringing in plan reviews, we would love to be totally digity. I know you want us to go there, Mr. Mayor, but it's going to take a little time.
Lot of file cabinets, sir, lot of file cabinets.
Yes, sir.
All right, with that being said, does anyone else have any other questions for our presenter or for our city manager? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I would like to consider or entertain a motion to consider and approve of the American Engineers Agreement for Design and Construction of 6116 Mableton Parkway and allow the mayor to negotiate and execute agreement. Before I entertain that, though, Mr. Manager, just for clarity's sake, this does stipulate 6116. Now that we're talking about two sides, is this still going to be considered?
Yes, sir, it is still 6, it will be still 6116, but there are two suites, you're correct, suite 140 and suite 144. When we do give our literature, we'll tell everybody, address is 6116, we may add the suite on there. But yes, sir, this is for, they know they're looking at it, they're going to pull, Kelly sat down now, we're looking at pulling one permit for the both spaces.
Yes, one permit for the suites.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Saves us time and money.
Sure, okay. All right, with that being said, I'll entertain the motion now.
I'd like to make a motion for consideration and approval of American Engineers Agreement for Design and Construction of 6116 Mableton Parkway, Suite 140 and 144, and the mayor to negotiate and execute agreement.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Any comments, any other questions around this matter? Hearing no other discussions, I'd like to call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, thank you. We'll now move to item 12F, which is consideration approval of an agreement with Chit Chat Communications for the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement. Mr. Manager, we'd like to provide comment on this matter.
Yes, sir, I have Ms. Carla Morrison's going to come up and give us a brief on what she has. This is an opportunity, as you know, we do not have a communications and community engagement director hired yet, we're working on that process, but I've had a few council members mention that they would like to let their constituents know what they're doing, what's going on in the city. And right now, we haven't been as active as we should on our social media and letting the constituents know other than a few town halls, which were very successful. But Ms. Carla Morrison's going to be able to explain what she can do, make sure that we're communicating with the constituents what's going on here in the city. Ms. Morrison?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carla Morrison. I am the Executive Director of Communications for Chit Chat Communications, a PR firm, an innovative PR firm here in the City of Mableton. I'm actually a new resident of Mableton, just two months in, and I'm really excited to be a part of this new city. I participated in your one-year anniversary and that was really fun for me. But the objective that we have set up for the City of Mableton is to develop, implement, and maintain a plan of action for an online newsletter, social media campaign, and website. We will focus on influencing residents to lean into the city, grow, thrive, and get involved with Mableton. We will amplify the message to the residents and elevate the city to be known as one of the most industrious and populous cities in Cobb County. And we plan to do that through the newsletter, social media, and website. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation today, and I've looked through most of the information that you provided. I, my question is around, I guess, a general statement to begin with, because as we continue to talk about adding services, not necessarily services to transition city, but as we start to mature as a city, I guess I'll say, I've said before and I'll say again, our goal and our plan is to organically grow this city government. And part of that means that we're still looking at hiring department heads and looking at hiring specific talent as employees of the city to be able to move forward. Now, with that being said, we understand that sometimes we need additional help, a shot in the arm, a way to accelerate some things. And in full disclosure, we've had some starts and haven't quite gotten to where we want to be. So bringing in outside consultants is something that I think is supportive, I support it, but it does not supplement, or it does not, it does not go in contrary to our goal into bringing in full-time talented staff. So when I notice that from a salary impact perspective, this is basically, you know, the funds is basically offset from what we'll be paying the communications director, I want to be clear that the goal, at least for myself, is not that we eschew the plan of hiring a communications director, that this is simply a matter for us to get some solid communication efforts up and off the ground in a much quicker substantial format. So I just want to make that statement, so make it clear, because we was asked where our direction is with the city. We are absolutely still going to move forward with hiring a communications director. And if this motion is approved, I'll be looking with Frank and our finance team to ensure that this contract does not limit our ability to actually go out and hire a full-time communications director. So I wanted to make that statement first. As to a question, one of the things that's going to be critical to me as we utilize you or any service we bring on, is the momentum, the service level agreements and how we are able to define our growth, right? So one thing I did not see in here was tracking and reporting on the growth of either social media or newsletter consumption. You know, we look to have opportunities to grow our newsletter, to grow our email list, but I want to make sure that there are tangible, reportable efforts that we can see, whether that's on a month over month or week over week, to how we're actually growing, how we're specifically touching people, and how many people we're actually touching. And if we could work to set some goals towards that and then have some reportable actions on how close we are to hitting those. Is that something that you could actually make happen?
Definitely.
And commit to into this agreement?
I could commit to it, yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Can you speak to how your company and your experience compares or is different from maybe other companies that offer the same type of services? And what advantage would you provide for Mableton that another company would not be able to do?
Well, we don't really compare ourselves to other companies, we just do the work. We're great at amplifying messages, and we've done it for government entities as well as cultural organizations and educational organizations. And we always exceed. So far, we have 100% track record of exceeding expectations for our clients. And so with this, we do set marks, we know that there are, there are 78,000 residents in the City of Mableton. However, we're starting with a newsletter, if we were to start it, we would start with a 4,000, I'm sorry, a 40,000 membership subscriber base. And we would expect to get the subscribers before our term is up. So if that would be a six-month contract or a 12-month contract, we would have that in place. And so we're able to amplify messages through our different methods because we do public relations. We don't just do newsletters and websites, but we do full-fledged public relation campaigns. And so some of those techniques we would use in infusing to get others involved with the newsletter, with the website.
And I can address Ms. Herndon. In my research, what did distinguish Chit Chat Communications is that I talked to another city, how they were doing their newsletters and how they were doing their social media. They had to disjoint it, they had one person over social media, had another person over newsletters, and then I asked them what the cost was. social media, had another person over newsletters, and then I asked them what the cost was and they were, matter of fact, I got one person here. I'm going to be careful what I'm saying. One of the, one of the people here that does, that is here. So they, they have newsletters handled by one person, social media handled by another. And in some cases, the content is written by staff, or the content may be written by council. What I wanted to make clear with Ms. Morrison is that I don't think you all have time to write content or time to take pictures. And she said she could actually interview, meet with you all and get the content and get the pictures and do what it takes to get the stuff produced. And that was one thing that separated her. Another thing that separated her is that we're getting a trifecta here, where I said I need occasional updates to our website, closings, holidays, any type of event. And she did say that was not necessarily her forte, but on a minimum basis, she would be able to go and do what we call updates. And so I wouldn't have to task a councilperson to update the website when we have something. And then the social media piece. So to get the social media, newsletter, community engagement, photography, and website to catch all of it in one spot, that is not unique for most communication firms.
A quick question on that, just on that. Is press release also included in this scope? Or is that, and that brings me to my question. Are there any other services that would be out of scope that we'll have to pay for? Or are we paying for all of the services that you render?
So, so you all would be only paying for the newsletter, the social media, and the website updates. When it comes to the public relations, in terms of press release and distribution to the media outlets, that's a whole nother category. Right now, I want to focus on the things that I understand that you all need immediately. However, in terms of handling press, that's, that's what our company is, that's what we do, that's our specialty. And we can offer that to you, but right now, we just wanted to just introduce ourselves to you, let you know some of what we can do. And if you all are ready to move forward with the big, the big things, we can, we can make that happen. That's even for us.
The, the resolution in the contract does not include that right now.
Hi, I have a question. And thank you. I know you've been doing this for 25 years , I saw on your website, so thank you for that. But I had a specific question around, I know our requirements may be a little bit different, but can you provide a use case of a government that you work with and some of the things that you were able to do in a little bit more detail? I know newsletter and, and social media campaigns and things of that nature, but can you talk through a use case for me?
Yeah, so we've worked with the city of Atlanta. We actually worked with the Workforce Development Agency within the city of Atlanta. And I was the person who created the newsletter. Now, when I did that, this was the hard copy newsletter. So we did the hard copy newsletter. And within that division, there were so many different departments within that division. I actually had to interview and talk to different people, the different services that they provided, the customers that they worked with, to create some of these stories. And so I did that for, you know, a period of, I believe, six months. I've also worked with Councilwoman Andrea Boone. And with her, I was doing some community engagement. I've also done it with the Cobb County, some community engagement. So I've worked with different government entities, doing different aspects of the services that we provide. Some, it's newsletter writing, others, it's public relations, others, it's, you know, community engagement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and I even did some, some PR for the mayor, the former mayor, Keisha Lance Bond.
From a PR perspective, I am, yeah. I, my biggest question comes around the creation of an online newsletter. Is that not our website that we just update?
I'm sorry, I'm just asking.
Or is it something that is being emailed out?
I think that's email.
So how, how, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and answer that question. How would you do the subscription?
So how that would work, how would I create the subscribers, get the subscribers?
So that's going to be email subscription that when they opt in, then you would email them a newsletter?
Right. And then we have different ideas of how we can get more of the, the residents in the city of Mabelton to opt in, QR codes and things of that nature, as well as text messaging and things of that nature. So that's how we would get their information to then distribute the newsletter. And we would look at the newsletter being something that's monthly. So something that may be happening in the future, something that may be immediately just happened, past. That's kind of what your newsletter is. It's to just inform the community of what's happening right now, in the future, maybe in the immediate past. Your website would be your mainstay. That's the things that go on, on a regular basis, or the three different departments that the city of Mabelton will be governing, as well as what's going on in the mayor's office with city council. And then you all are going to be hiring different people, so your HR, your employment. So those would just be different tabs on your website. And then your social media, that's kind of your daily, you know, something's happening, we have road blockage, we need immediate, you know, people to know immediately. That's something we would also put on the website. So there's just different ways of communicating the messages that go on. I, I heard some of the people speaking earlier about different things that were going on. And they were like, well, how do we find out, you know, about a meeting? And those would be the ways, your social media, of course, but also your newsletter. It could come out at the first of the month, every month. And so they know what's happening for that month. They know what's happening in July. So it's, it's just different methods of communicating what you all are doing. How can they utilize you? Because this is a new city, a lot of your residents don't even know who their particular councilperson is and how they can utilize, what can you do for me? And I noticed because as soon as I got here, I started talking, you know, and I started asking questions to residents, friends that I've had in the city of Mabelton for a while. One has been here for 30 years, one has been here for 25, another has been here for 15, and another has been here for five. And I said, well, who's your city council? And they didn't know, you know? So this would be a way of introducing it. And I said, well, come with me tonight, I'm going to introduce you to a city councilperson. So most of them are here tonight.
My, my last question would be, can you direct me to, like, maybe a relatively new example of what your newsletter, I mean, I know it varies from place to place, but like, I would, I would love to take a look and see.
Yeah, I sure can. I actually, Mr. Tanks, I, I sent him a copy and I could forward it to you immediately after this, just something that I actually did for Chit Chat Communications. And it highlights our clients. We use it, in our case, we use it to market our clients and market our business and say, hey, this is what we've done this month with our clients. Just last month, I worked with one of my clients, getting him on Good Morning America. And so, of course, that was a big deal and we highlighted in our newsletter, along with other things. One of my other clients was just raving about some of the work that I did. He flew in to the city and I took him around and he did a number of interviews. And so he did a little short video and we highlighted that. So that's what we use it for, for, for Chit Chat Communications. But in the case of the city of Mabelton, we would make sure that everyone knows this is what's going on in Mabelton. Come and be a part of what's going on in Mabelton, be it your activities, like your one-year anniversary that I participated in, but, or just what you're doing in your district, what's hap- I remember when I first met you, Councilwoman Jeffco, she was like, make sure you come to this event. It was something that was going on. And I couldn't figure out where it was happening, which is why I didn't come. But that, you know, that's something that would be highlighted in the newsletter, as well as the website if needed. But like I said, the website is your mainstay. That's for your, your different departments. I know there's three different departments that you all kind of have that'll be in that office. So that would be kind of to have that information, whatever they're doing. It would also be, you know, whatever the mayor is doing, you know, he would have a message or something of that nature, you know, telling residents, this is what's happening. So there's just different ways and reasons that you use certain entities and tools to communicate.
Thank you. And the newsletters and social media, that's not just for the city, but each individual councilperson?
The newsletter?
Yes. You said the newsletter is just the city of Mabelton, but you, you, do you offer, like, do you manage the social media also for each individual councilperson?
Well, I thought there was one, I, I actually am on the page, the Mabelton, city of Mabelton Facebook page. And I don't see a Instagram for city of Mabelton. I see something that says city of Mabelton, Georgia, but there's nothing on there at all. So I don't know if, if any of you have created it, but just didn't do anything with it, or if somebody else had. But that's what I'm offering that I would manage. Now, we can manage anything you need us to manage. However, what we're proposing tonight is to manage your Facebook page, which you already have established, and then create you an Instagram page.
Yeah.
Do we also include other social media forums, for example, Nextdoor? You know, for example, the county has a Nextdoor page where they share information. Or are you also able to create something similar for the city of Mabelton?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, like I said, we offer all of those services. We were just, when we looked at your social media, we were looking at also who is here, who, who is in, who are the residents, and the age group. And that age group dictates that you definitely do Facebook and that you probably do Instagram too, right? And so that's what we focused on. But we, we're familiar with Nextdoor and we can also offer that. We, like we said, we do social media, we do public relations. So we do those things and we can offer more. Right now, we just wanted to kind of introduce ourselves to you, share some things that we can do with you. When you talked about managing and having expectations, like that's, that's manageable for right now. And as you grow, we can go into all those other.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm so happy we're doing this because I know myself and Councilman Ferguson are in charge of the city's Facebook page and we're doing a horrible job at it. We really need help.
I, I think, oh, go ahead, Councilman, do you have anything else? So this, this contract that we're looking at, I think is, just from the questions, there is a, there's a tremendous number of facets to this, right? I mean, we also, that Instagram page is actually being squatted on, so I'm actually working with Meta to try to get control back of that. We do have a YouTube channel, which isn't exactly active yet because we're still using those folks back there at Icon, but we do have a, so, and I mean, the, the list can go on, right? When you say social media, there's many different aspects of that. Even when you're talking about posting or, you know, the, the number of newsletters that go out, or how much content that it has, bottom line is that, that turns down to expertise and to time.
Right.
Right? I'm hearing there's job of expertise. The time component to this obviously dictates the price per bus, but it also dictates how much services we get, right? How many different updates? And I know it says three updates, two to three updates per week on social media platforms. Well, if that's five platforms, then, you know, that's 15 postings. But if there's two platforms, you know, you see what I'm saying? That, and that goes back to time. So I am, I am positive and have an affirmative thought about moving forward, but also don't, but also think that there's a lot of other discussions that need to happen to get a contract that is very clear about, I mean, your time is your money.
Right.
But the results that we get out of that is, is based on what our citizens are going to see as to what the actual output is. So again, I'm supportive of this, but I, I know that there is, I'm expecting that there's going to be a lot more detail that needs to come out of the actual contract as far as what you're actually going to provide. This, I, this I totally see as, as a high-level aspect, because we've talked, talked about content calendars and what gets posted when. And I'm thinking of things like pixels and tracking and how we are re, how we are re-establishing ourselves. If they go on one site, are we tracking to other site? What are you doing around cookies? There's, there's a whole lot of questions that I have that, quite frankly, isn't set for this meeting.
Right.
But that I'll absolutely want to go into. And I'll also fully acknowledge that this is, this is a very important, but this is only one component to an overall communication strategy. I, I do believe this is, I mean, we're doing bits and pieces, but I'm happy to see if we can get this online. But again, I don't, I want to be clear that this isn't a full communication strategy, which I know you know, but I want to make clear that as we're talking through this, as we go forward. So again, just, and, and a statement to make is that if we decide to go forward with this, there is a lot more to this contract that needs to be fleshed out.
So, I mean, with that comment, I feel the exact same way, but with that comment, we're being asked to approve.
You can actually, y'all do not, most of these items, I'm sorry, I thought somebody said something. Most of these items, obviously, we bring up for council. You don't have to, you can, we can defer if you want. But let me make very clear what my intention with this was. A newsletter that reaches out to the constituents, someone updating our website. And in my mind, it was limited to right now to our existing social media site, which was Facebook. Now, if we want to go back and make a little bit more robust, this is more of a stopgap measure, as, as the mayor has mentioned. Tomorrow, I'm speaking with our HR firm. We're getting ready to start our entire process of hiring. We'll be going out to get a communications engagement director. Ms. Carla may apply, who knows? But that was the initial intention, intent of this, was not to, I mean, there's so much, like you say, open door, there's so many levels of communication. This, I'm glad the mayor brought it out. This is not a communication strategy. This is not the full package of what a communications director would do. They would have a department of people handling certain portions. With this, I want to make sure somebody can get a newsletter out, make sure that we can get that Facebook at least properly attended, because people will stop going to your Facebook site if they don't hear any updates. And they see we're not putting anything new in there, why would they go? Then they can get tagged. And then also, the website, and we need to have certain things put on the website. Sometimes it can be challenging to get it done. But if we can have somebody, we can say, hey, we need to put this on, we're going to close on this day, we're going to have a holiday on this day, to have somebody that can handle it immediately. So that was the initial, that was the intent. If you want it to be a little bit more robust, you all could defer and we can discuss more. I'm quite sure the price will change. But for the price that I have here, and I, it does say, social media platforms.
Right.
We can create that up, but we can have this, as our city council say, in a substantial form. But I do want to make sure, my intent was, the stuff that we have that is existing, in addition to the newsletter, that's not being addressed properly now.
Yeah, and I, and so just for clear, I, I'm seeking for clarity as far as, you know, like we said, platforms versus platform, how many, it, it is a substantial difference, right? And knowing that time is money. Now, and I don't, I don't know that anything's on here specifically about website.
Maybe I can, because I packaged it up. So what I offered you all in what you initially have is, it comes down to 12 social media updates per month. We were specifically looking at Facebook and Instagram. I know that you mentioned the YouTube page and then also Nextdoor. And there's so many more, I mean, even LinkedIn. But we also, this package is 12 social media updates per month, five website updates per month, and a distribution to 40,000 member subscriber base. That, that's that package, right? And so if it appears that we exceed that, because, because the city is so new and you're still trying to engage and develop, you know, activity, I thought this was a great starting point. But of course, you're going to grow, you know, and things are going to happen. And so it will change. But I wouldn't suggest, as a professional, I wouldn't suggest that you, okay, we want you to do YouTube, we want you to do LinkedIn, we want, we want you to do five or 10 different social media platforms when you're still trying to just cap- social media platforms, when you're still trying to just capture your audience. Right now, you're still capturing your residents. They know it's the city, but they got to know how to connect with you and understand what's going on with the city. And so, because of the, the target audience here in the city, I thought that Facebook is definitely one that everybody probably looks at, and I thought that Instagram would be the other one. Then we could move on to, you know, YouTube, to the LinkedIn's, to anything else. But this was just, this is like a starter package. This is just something where we're starting. And then as we grow and people engage, then we can move on to all those other big and great things.
Yeah, for clarification, when you say 12 posts, are you talking about unique posts, or are we talking about any post? I mean, if we have a post on Facebook and you duplicate it on Instagram, is that two posts? And if you duplicate it on Nextdoor, is that three posts? And if we have 12 in a month, then that's, yeah, we will definitely need to exceed that.
Right. Well, that, that's up to you all. 12, 12 posts for Instagram and Facebook. That's where we were at with that, 12 posts for that. Now, I mean, once we, I, I don't know, you know, how much you all are doing in each district just yet, to really gauge that. But as we move forward, or if we do move forward, then, once we can gauge that, we can redefine this and say, okay, you know, because this isn't, this isn't set in stone. This is what we're offering, you know? We want you all to have an idea of what we can do for you, and then, and just see how that works for you. Because like I said, this is one-year anniversary. You're still developing and connecting with your different constituents. And until you really have them, you know, I wouldn't move that quickly, you know, when we can, if you want to.
Yes, I, I think it would be essential and beneficial for us to assess what our actual requirements are a little bit better. And once we've identified that, you know, I would recommend deferring, so that we can have a, be very clear on what it is that our needs are, and then that way, you know, it can align with what you're offering in terms of your services.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I, I don't disagree, and which is why I was kind of going down the road of details around this. I mean, I, I get overall what we're looking at, but we do have a LinkedIn page.
Okay.
So, we do, right? So, so if we say, hey, you're going to cover all this, then I don't want, next week, we go, oh, we have this, and we have this, and you're like, you know, oh, we didn't. So, to go back to an assessment, to go, a needs requirements document around what specifically we need, as it relates to social media and a newsletter, I would, I would be happy for us to put together that together, be able to present that back to you. Because I understand you're, you're creating a starter package for us.
Right.
But to make sure it's customized truly to what we need, I think it'd be beneficial for us to put together a requirements document and give that to you.
Make sure it's for us, right?
Okay.
Because this doesn't, like I said, doesn't even mention the website, even though.
So, I think.
It mentions the website.
No, what it is, is, so I have a presentation for you all that we're going to look on the screen, but it's not working. So, the, what you all have is the initial proposal that I shared with City Manager Tank. And since then, we had a conversation, I followed up, and he told me some more of the needs. And so, I submitted another proposal. And so, that proposal can be sent to you this evening as soon as this meeting is over, for you all to take a look at. Or we can do it right now, and I can have my business manager do this, and you can look at it right back.
No, like the mayor said, and like Councilwoman Jeffcoat said, I think we need a, a very good requirements document, because I don't want you, I don't want to set you up for failure.
Okay.
And let's get a requirements document together quickly that we can get over so that they can update. So, I would suggest we defer as well.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this item for.
A second.
My apologies.
Go.
Y'all help me.
Chit chat.
Went number 12A? No. I'd like to make a motion to defer item 12F until another time in the future.
I second that.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion about the item of deferment? Hearing no.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd just like to make a, a statement that in the interim of what, what we decide to do, I am, am more than happy to help with the Facebook page and social media until we get a more comprehensive idea of what direction we want to go in, in our community communications engagement going forward.
Great, thank you.
Sweet.
So, I'll call the question. All those in favor of deferring the consideration of approval of the agreement with Chit Chat Communications for the mayor to negotiate until a later date, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing the opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Morrison, we appreciate your proposal today. Sorry we couldn't take a look at the presentation. As stated, we will put together a requirements document, we'll get that back to the city manager, and then allow you the opportunity to custom build that proposal. At that point in time, we'd ask you to come back.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Great, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And welcome to Mabelton.
Thank you.
What district are you in?
I'm in District.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
I have four people from District.
Hey, five.
All right, we've got item 12G, which is consideration of approval for amending the city council calendar to reflect a work session meeting for July 22 at 5:30. I'm assuming that's going to be here at the epicenter, Mr. Manager. And the reason that this is being, that we're calling for, or we need to discuss this tonight at the council meeting, is because our work sessions are generally scheduled for the first meeting of the month, and, and being that this is the 22nd, it falls outside of that. So, Mr. Manager, do you have anything else to add for this item?
Yes, sir. Pulling up my item now. See, grows as operations, and I think you all may have that in your package, the council is going to be faced with some very important policy decisions, decisions process. It's enhanced when you have, council members can ask critical questions, as you have tonight, in an environment conducive or conducive to learning and questions about potential agenda items. Currently, City of Mabelton, we need to give input for their planning and zoning service transfer. As you know, we're getting ready to do one of what we started already. We approved the contract with IBTS. We already got meetings scheduled with the planning and zoning department of Cobb County. We're ready to kick it off. And then, one of our subs, Mr. Hosack, has kind of gotten ahead of the curve, and he's ready to come to the council with some policy-based decisions. This 22nd was selected because we do not have a council meeting in July because of the summer break. Our next one is July 24th, and so, we don't slow it down another month for the service. I felt to get it on the calendar as soon as possible. This also, I would also take advantage of this work session and have a report from our HR firm to allow this kind of discussion, also a more robust and report from our financial services firm. And I think at that time, it was going to have, allow you to ask some critical questions about pension, and possibly, if the city attorney desires, some more information on the URA.
It's a Monday?
It's a Monday, it's a Monday.
Yeah, it's a Monday, and then it would be, obviously, we have a council meeting at noon today.
I have a question. Are there any other dates that could be considered? I mean, we haven't had a poll on everyone's schedule, but I know I will be out of the country until the 24th, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Councilwoman Jeffcoat won't be on a date either?
So, yeah, this was obviously, when I put something before the council, it's a recommendation. I give no reason for the recommendation, but if it's not something the council desires to, you all can make that decision.
I, I want to be clear, I don't think the council does not want to have the work session. I think it's just a question around what date.
No, what I meant on the 22nd, if you don't want to do it on the 22nd, yeah.
Are these the, the work session items, this is for our next meeting, does it have to be before the 24th?
It's typically good to have the work session before your council meeting, so you, like tonight, we've done a lot of discussion. And if you get it worked out, where you can get out of discussion, out of the way you come through council meeting, you can run through that agenda pretty quickly. So, I kind of wanted to tee it up like that, but it's not required. If, especially with the planning and zoning, they have specific, and the mayor's even talked, we got specific things that may take up a full work session. They don't have to be tied to a council meeting. That was just my proposal and my recommendation, because they were right there together.
Thank you. Would the week before be okay? Like, but does that work for everyone? Like, the week before the 22nd, not the week of the 22nd, but before it, that way?
We'd get a 15.
We'd get a 15.
Yep. That would be it.
Yeah.
Any particular date?
Would, would they be, do we need to wait to see if they're available for that day, for that week?
You know, I could, I'm checking right now. July 15th is, what, what day is the 15th?
Well, that, the week of the 15th, that's a Monday.
Oh, the week of the 15th?
Yes.
You're going to get rid of your summer break?
Okay. So, the, the week of the 15th, I'm sorry, I thought we were 15th or 16th, I am going 17th through the 24th.
Wow, okay.
Can, I, I'm just going to ask, can, can we find a more efficient or streamlined way of kind of doing this? I know, I, I fully respect it, I mean, I think everyone's going to have some conflicts in the middle of the summer. I don't, Mr. Manager, I don't know that anybody is comfortable with signing off on the 22nd or another date. And as for to go through this exercise right now, quite frankly, I don't know if it's a good use of all of our times. Is this something we could possibly take offline?
Yeah.
Do a doodle, come up with? Now, the question is, the people that you have lined up to ensure that we, you know, that they're available during this time, but I, in just the sake of timing and trying to make sure this is all coordinated, so we can have as many people at, at the work session as possible, I think we probably just need to do a poll, as was mentioned earlier, and see if we can come up with a time that works for everyone.
Yes, sir, I could just be mindful, I think, if we don't caution, y'all, you know, show direction. Our next meeting is July 24th, we would probably end up in August, which is okay with me, because some of this is tied to stuff that's going to happen. So, if you all would kind of let me know what works, and then I'll check back in with those folks, especially the planning and zoning folks that are doing the lift, sift and shift.
Sure.
And just make sure it works for them. They're, they're the primary ones. Of course, our pension plan is going to be a little bit detailed, too. That's a big decision. So, yes, sir, I'll be glad to, once I get some dates from you, I can check with those and, and then follow up.
Again, the goal was to have this work session prior to the 24th.
Oh.
Or even potentially on the 24th.
Well, he's saying it's not as critical. We could wait until August, but, again, I think we just take it offline and doodle it up and all that sort of thing.
Yeah.
To find the right day.
Now, we would be out of meeting status once y'all make that, is that correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, you, you're not going to do doodle tonight, correct?
No.
So, I'm saying that when we all make a decision, we won't be in a position to make a decision as a council, I don't believe.
Well, we could have one of the assistants just reach out to the council and say, what are your conflict dates, and what are your preferences?
I, I think, so, the question is, do we, how do we officially get another meeting scheduled without having a meeting to schedule that meeting?
Well, that can be done by the mayor by giving notice to the other council members, or by four council members agreeing.
I'll just, I mean, yeah.
So, we need to pass, or?
Yeah, they, four council members can collectively agree to call any meeting.
I, I mean, and I, and a, and a work session is a meeting, so.
Yeah, you can do it during the meeting, too, but if, if you want to do it outside of the meeting.
Sure.
Then one council member can contact another and say, do you agree to have a meeting? And as long as there are four who are on board, you can do that at any time. Or the mayor can unilaterally set a meeting, as long as he gives notice to each council member.
And we've spent eight months doing that, so.
We're well versed in doing that. I'm not sure why this is new.
So, I, I think that's, that's the course of action. I think we could, we could probably table this item, and then just, just determine another date, which we could all meet for the work session.
Table it, or, because then we got to take it off the table and all those sort of things? Okay, we got a dirty table. All right, so, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table item 15G, consideration approval of amending the city council meeting calendar to reflect the work session meeting for July 22 at 5:30.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor of table and the consideration and approval of amending the council meeting?
Can I make a suggestion, that we just, just make a motion to deny it? Because we know that date's not good, like, and that way, you leave it open to?
Yeah, we don't get a vote at all.
Okay, okay. I mean, we, we know we're not going to have the meeting on July 22nd, so, okay.
But I made a motion.
Yeah. So, all those in favor of tabling the amendment of the city council meeting calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, the ayes have it.
And this tips us down to 12B, which is a financial report and authorization of the government for that part, planning on spending plan, not in the city activities. As I think you all know, we have, have approved a spending.
We have approved a spending plan that is due to expire on June 30th. We're at a point now where the city manager's talked a lot about bringing in additional help to build out our financial team, so to speak, and I've spoken personally with some of them, they're, they're ready to go, putting things in place. The city manager continues to meet with them. This still leaves us in a situation where it's right now, we still have a spending plan that's set to end at the end of the month. So, we need to do something about that to ensure we stay in our own compliance. Again, I'll be clear that we are still within our two-year transition period in which the state does not require us to have a budget. The spending plan was a way for us to show our transparency, and also have some guiding principles to be clear about what, what money we're bringing in, and where we're spending the money as it related to our expenses. So, with that being said, I know that our finance consultant, Frank Malazi, as well as the city manager, wanted to discuss this item of the FY, or interim FY25 spending plan, which is basically a bridge that will cover a gap of 90 days while the financial team works to put together a plan for what will be our, our rest of the year spending plan. Still not quite budget, but it's still going to be another spending plan. So, with that, Mr. Malazi, would you approach?
And Frank, before you get started, I mean, you explained that very well. You're going to have a handout here from Allison. I would advise not to try to comprehend that thing by reading it. It would be best to let Frank navigate it. Frank is going to introduce one of our financial services firm, Mr. Chris Pike, and then he'll do a presentation on the proposed interim spending plan, and then our city attorney has the recommended motion that she may have. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we had, we were not able to print the resolution because some complications with printers upstairs, so we all may have to go and check the email for the recommended resolution. It has a certain structure that aligns with requirements. So, that, whoever makes the resolution, if you have the email from the city attorney, I think that we did send it out, is that correct?
Yeah, that, it's not, yeah. So, Lily graciously just sent it out, so you have it in your email, and it is consistent with the previous spending plan. I think the only difference is that we've included more language that speaks to the city manager, as well as the previous threshold was 5,000, which has been increased to 10,000, subject to being consistent with what you approved in the spending plan.
All right, Frank?
So, my job will be in several sections. It will be, the first one will be, I'll introduce Chris. Chris is not new to many. Most of us, we know, who have been in local government, he has been presenting, and he's a CPA. So, he is assisting us as a CPA who definitely need to audit. He's part of the SANTA Financials, and then after that, after he finishes, then I'll present the report that you have. Unfortunately, you may not see it clearly, but you see the report, and the report will be divided into two, I'll go in details. Then thereafter, I'll hand over to the manager, then the manager will. Then thereafter, I'll hand over to the manager, then the manager will work with you and finish what we are talking about to adopt this one that we have. So Chris, here is your time.
Thank you, Frank, and good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's good to see a lot of you again. I know I've met many of you in Athens a few months ago, and it was a pleasure then, and certainly a pleasure to be asked back by the city manager and collectively you through the agreement. Wanted to kind of let you know, when we got the green light, we really hit the ground running, we got the bank reconciliations all caught up all the way through May. So at this point, the July of last year through May is done. We've accounted for both the, the bank accounts, the checking and the savings, and come up with some spending categories and all that will be shared with you tonight through the year-to-date spending plan, which will also tee up what you're about to approve for the interim plan for the next couple of months. Our role really in assisting the city manager and you all is to lay some good foundation and some good groundwork for when you bring on your team, they have good policies in place, they have good information in place, they have a good system in place, that they can immediately start making impact, rather than having to play catch-up with a lot of the things that will help get them ready for. So you can kind of consider us your pediatrician, getting you started in the early years as you get ready for bringing on your staff and getting everything set up on the financials. Have started drafting a lot of the policies that we won't talk about on the 22nd, but we'll talk about at a date to be determined, and getting some of the questions to you as to what you want to see in your policies that will make Mappleton unique, because there is, there's, there's obviously many directions that you can go as a city when you're developing your financial backbone with these financial policies, and we want to make sure we ask you the right questions so that we get those policies in place that make it unique and successful for you. Obviously, I'm available to answer pretty much any question that has a dollar sign, whether it be pensions or financial policies, or year-to-date financial reports, or just what we can and can't do legally as it relates to budgets. Whatever their questions are, I'm definitely a resource. I would encourage you to, you know, reach out to me through the city manager. I'm incredibly responsive and glad to help you through any questions that you might have, both on your current spending reports as well as policies in general. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Frank, pending any questions that you might have, and I'll go from there.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pike?
All right, good, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
I do have a question about the resolution itself on, somewhere in here, about, let's see, in section 1B under authorization. The amount of, says the city council must approve any payment, service, purchase or contract over $10,000. It was originally $5,000. Is there a reason for the increase, and can we put it back to $5,000?
There is a reason for the increase. If I, if I have to wait, with some of these constructions and furniture and stuff like right now up in the epicenter, we're putting in furniture, we buy printers and stuff till staff can operate. If I have to wait to, if I have to wait each time to come by the council meeting, it would, it would greatly slow me down on getting facilities set up and services established. To be honest, I'm up against a timeline, and we need twice a month to have to come back and ask for approval for something over $5,000. I mean, we can get one credenza sometimes that would take us over $5,000. And the spending plan, even though it's not a budget, and I'll let the city attorney or the city financial person speak to this, that once you approve the spending plan, that's what I'm going to be holding to, but there's obviously in that spending plan the projected expenses, their entire categories. If there's a contract, it has to come back here to the council, I cannot approve a contract. But if there's something, for example, engineering services, to get a concept can easily, a concept set of plans can easily cost $6,000 or $8,000, and if I'm going to come to you all and explain, hey, here's the concept for this particular floor plan, I would have to wait to come to council, get approval, and then have them do it, and it slows me down. But I, I am here, as the charter says, to work at the pleasure of the council. If you all would like to keep it at five, I would. I would just say that that's not a practice I've seen in any other city I've ever known of. $5,000 is a pretty low threshold. I understand why you may all have done it, but it's, in my opinion, in my opinion, it's a little restrictive.
You used furniture as an example. Did we not already pass a resolution that you could already spend that amount up to X amount of dollars to?
I'm sorry, say again?
As far, you used like furniture as an example, did we not already pass a resolution to give you authorization to purchase furniture up to that?
Yes, yes, like I had a furniture contract, not an example, but let's look at the, let's say if you authorize me in an executive session to pursue a lease, and I decide I need to come to you with at least a concept, engineering services would, they are typically $6,000, $7,000 plus. I would take your authorization for me to come back with a concept, there's permission to come back with a concept that would cost me, will at least cost engineering services like for a service of $6,000 or so. So I could come back, I, I would, again, work at the pleasure of the council. To give my professional opinion, I, $5,000 is restrictive. We're going to get busy, very busy, a lot moving parts, and I would not go outside the spending plan. Before I spend anything, I normally ask Frank, is this authorized, or is this within the spending plan? We have a paper trail, we now have a system set up where all this stuff is monitored. So there's nothing that I would be worried about, but I'm not completely sure the purpose of putting a limit on the spending for a city manager of $5,000. I would be challenged to know what would be the purpose.
Is this just for the city manager, is this also for the mayor?
Well, great question. The mayor, in my absence, was the CEO. Now that I am here, I have that role. When we started talking about finances, I think y'all had, you know, as an acting CEO, I'm quite sure you had that, but again, if y'all decide $5,000, I will work with $5,000. I just thought, my personal opinion, that it's restrictive.
I think I would prefer $5,000 if it's going to be both the mayor and the city manager on the amount.
Yes, so that's what... Chris, you could come up and speak to that, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a great example of the questions that will come up as we start discussing a purchasing policy, for example. I will agree with the city manager, I think $5,000 is incredibly low. Professionally, my opinion, I think $10,000 is too low, if I'm going to be completely honest about that. Now, that said, Susan's in the room, she may remember back in 2013, we had a very similar conversation when we were setting up the city of Brookhaven. And they did something that was kind of unique that maybe you want to consider here for this resolution. They implemented a higher threshold, but they also implemented a requirement that the city manager provide written notification before he actually executed. So let's give you an example, let's say we set up $20,000, and he could, at any point, do up to $5,000, but if it was between 5 and 20, he would notify you and give you, say, 24, 36 hours to respond back on, yep, this is fine, continue under your authority to approve up to 20, or no, let's put the brakes on this one, I think we need to have a conversation before you proceed. You can be flexible in some, in something like that, and it would allow him to continue to move quickly, certainly quicker than waiting until the next council meeting, but maybe not instant and completely just immediately starting out. And then over time, as you establish a rapport with the city manager, and the city manager starts to understand your expectations, those dollar amounts can increase to rely more on his professional judgment as you mature and as he matures in your current roles. So that's, you know, that's something that you may want to consider if the move to $10,000 is causing heartburn to at least four of you. Maybe this is a situation that can help alleviate that, but, you know, since you've asked my opinion, I will tell you, I think $10,000 is too low, I really do, because he's absolutely correct. Some of these professional services and even products and goods that you're going to be getting set up for as you mature into your cityhood, they're going to have some decent-sized price tags attached to them.
Is it common to have a different amount for different positions? Like, if we were to up the amount for, say, our city manager, but let's say we're not comfortable with giving the mayor this amount?
Yeah, so as I read your charter, and certainly I would defer to the city attorney on this one specifically, but as I read the charter, the mayor's spending limitations was, was really more as an interim until you got a city manager in place. As I read it and understood it, he was acting city manager until you got a city manager. So in most cases, it would be the city manager making the regular purchases, and then if you granted the mayor some additional authorities above and beyond what was specified within the charter, then obviously you could certainly do varying amounts for those positions. I would say that anybody below the city manager, so a department head, for example, that should be delegated by the city manager at that point, because ultimately, he's responsible for overseeing the staff. So, you know, if somebody needs to order a case of paper, they don't need to come to council for that, but that is something that the city manager would approve. If they need 100 cases of paper, then maybe the dollar amount's high enough that it, that it's something that he would need to sign off on, not just delegate the approval levels.
Chris, I have a question.
So short answer is yes, there would be varying levels.
I have a question. You said the threshold is significantly low if we went with the 10K. On average, what would be, from your experience, an acceptable threshold?
Well, a city this size, $78,000 plus, I would say probably somewhere close to $50,000 is what I would come back and recommend at a later, when we do have our work session. That would be the number that I would, that I would put out there. But again, if that's, if that's causing some concern, especially given your early youth as a city, then you could, you could implement that $50,000, but let us know if it's more than 25, and we're going to, you know, we'll give you 36 hours to kind of think about it, then we can proceed or not.
It worries stressing the difference between a discretionary fund and then threshold authorization. The spending plan sets what you all have agreed on, and if even within that spending plan, if I would exceed that threshold, I would come back to the council and say, hey, you did approve me to buy an electric vehicle for our code enforcement officers. Truck costs $49,000, it's approved in our capital budget, but because of the threshold set, I would come back to the council and say, we're getting ready to purchase a pickup truck for our code enforcement officers, I got a contract to get three of them from Ford. That kind of threshold would require me to come back and say, even though it's in the spending plan, I'm about to purchase three trucks for our code enforcement officers, it's going to cost us $150,000. But if it's already a spending plan, it allows me to go ahead and start working with Ford, negotiating the price, instead of have to come back and say, hey, I want to purchase a truck.
Yeah, and it's, and it's also important to recognize the distinction between a contract and a purchase. You know, a purchase, your electric bill, I mean, I've seen bills, you don't, you won't necessarily be managing streetlights, but I've seen $100,000 a month easily from a Georgia Power for a streetlight bill. That wouldn't necessarily come to council every time you got your monthly bill. Health insurance for employees, your retirement monthly contribution, those, those are not contracts, those are just routine purchases. You approve that once during the budget process, as long as you stay within that budget, he continues to make those purchases through the finance department in the internal controls that you establish internally. The items that I'm really referring to are the contracts that would go to council, and those typically have higher dollar amounts attached to them. So I would, I would recommend a number higher than even the $10,000, but again, it is ultimately a policy decision and a council decision on what that number ends up being.
Thank you, Chris.
Mayor, I do have a question, too, because listening to what the city manager said and what on this side, too, my concern is that we are against a timeline. We, and we're one year out into establishing this city. We have to get the services, we have to get everything in place. Now, we just came from the GMA convention, and I talked to cities, some cities were only 400 people, some cities were up to 8, 70, whatever. My question to you first, Mr. City Manager, is that if we continue operating like we are, because I'm all about efficiencies and getting things done as quickly as we can and efficiently, and as far as getting things as economically as we can, I consider all those things, but if we continue operating the way we are right now in terms of getting things done, because again, we are on a timeline, and if this slows you down at $5,000, which I have to agree, that sounds like we're a city of maybe 8,000, but be that as it may, if we continue this, this slows your, what you have to do down, and we're on this timeline. I don't want it to run, I don't want our lack of efficiency or our slowing down to cause us to start to get to our deadline, and we still, we still thumbing around trying to get whatever, furniture or refrigerators or whatever, and we have, what now, 12 months? Maybe? So again, in all due respect, I, I, I do respect and appreciate that we want to, I guess, save money by operating like we're a city of less than 8,000, I don't know, but we still have to get this city together, and we still have to get things in order. And I'm uncomfortable with operating in less than an efficient manner. So if I'm hearing on this side, we should be, we should be having 10, 10 times more than what we have right now in terms of that, and you're saying at least 10? That's, now, we need to really, just forgive me, forgive me, everybody, but I, I have a, I just have a real problem with what we're doing in terms of efficiency and what we're, what we're dealing with in terms of our timeline. I, for one, want the city to succeed, as does everyone here, but I, I think it bothers me that we're talking about this right now, and we have less than 12 months to get this thing together. So anything that makes the city run efficiently and we can get the things done that needs to be done by the city manager, let's do, I'm not saying necessarily we do 50,000, but come on, so let's, let's just consider what we're, what we're doing in terms of getting the city going, and I'm saying this in all due respect, but let's let Mr. Tang, let's equip him with what he needs to equip, to get the done, job done, so that we can get the task done. Otherwise, we'll be here talking about getting a, you know, yeah, you know, the nickel and dime stuff, and we've got to get the city, and that's, that's my, that's my passion, getting this city going. So let's do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gossman.
Yeah, and there's one other component, too, I would add to that. Part of it is, yes, he can operate efficiently and quicker with a higher threshold, but also you as council, this job that you've, for whatever reason, decided you wanted to do, it will take as much time as you allow it to take out of your lives. And it really becomes a question of where do you want to be spending your time and what are your priorities going to be? And if that is talking about items that cost between $5,000 and $10,000, you're certainly within that right to do so, but if you want to be talking about zoning ordinances and service delivery strategies and, and, you know, citizen engagement, and that's where your priorities want to be... and, you know, citizen engagement, and that's where your priorities want to be, then let Bill do his job, let the city manager's role do what it's chartered to do, and then let you worry about those bigger picture ideas and not the small check items.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report and authorization of an interim FY spending plan not to exceed 90 days.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Considering we've had considerable discussion on this, I'd like to call the question. All those in favor of approving the financial report and authorization of the FY or interim FY 25 spending plan not to exceed 90 days, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Here in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Pike and Mr. Malazie. We do appreciate your time and effort on pulling this together for us. At this point in time, I think this wraps up all the new business that we had. As mentioned earlier, we do not have any old business. So this will take us over to item 14, which is city manager's announcements and comments.
City manager.
Madam, that's okay. Madam Clerk, do you have any comments?
I'm sorry, I was taking counsel. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Learned a lot at GMA this weekend. Glad to see the council members that attended. Very proud of how we represent the city. Made a lot of connections down there. Very excited about what we have ahead of us. And then I would like to ask the mayor that we go into executive session, sir, for the purpose of real estate and personnel.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have any comments?
I have no really any comments, just a reminder that we do not have a meeting July 10th. It's a summer break unless somebody calls a meeting, but the general schedule is we will not meet on July 10th.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Attorney.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Davis?
Yes, again, good evening, everyone. I want to extend again the congratulations to our city manager for, and the city of Mableton becoming a city of ethics. Also, congratulations to our own Mayor Pro Tim Keisha Jeffcoat and her accomplishment. And Barry, you know you're here, but I want to congratulate you too for your award as since another year. Great job, sir.
Indeed.
And I also want to say that, again, I mentioned that we had went to the, had gone to the GMA conference this weekend for four, five days, and it didn't disappoint. I'm always impressed by the level of education, the level of commitment of the instructors of GMA, the CEO, everyone. And also the commitment of the people I met while I was there, from cities, like I said, some were only 400 people, some of the cities were larger than we were, are. But they all had one thing in common. They all wanted to do well by the city, and they came there for that knowledge to take it back, to make it work for the city. And I think that's an admirable thing, and when you get, it was about 2,600 people with that mindset, there's nothing that can't be done. So it was a great experience. I look forward to it next year, but, and thanks to each of the council members that were able to go because you represented well. So with that, I will say good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everybody. I just want to take a moment to touch on the concern that was expressed about some of the apartment complexes in District 2. And I know the ladies who made the comments are not here, but just in case they're listening, I just want to commend them on their bravery. And it is so heartbreaking to hear that these are the living conditions that our residents are in. I did visit some of the complexes a while ago, and they made a lot of promises that things will be fixed. But from what I'm hearing and what I've heard tonight, it sounds like it's time to revisit and implement strategies to ensure that our residents have a conducive home to live in with their families. So that is an initiative that I'll be taking on and working on in the next couple of weeks. And I'm also happy that we're setting up our code enforcement department and hoping that they can also support us in ensuring that we find a conducive living conditions for these residents. And I, again, just want to commend you for speaking up and for coming out tonight to express your concerns. Great seeing you, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief. First, I just want to say thank you so much for the recognition. I typically don't like those kinds of things, tanks, but I'm deeply humbled. I put a lot of work into, you know, the Army and all that I've done over my 29-year career. I enjoy working at the federal level. I'm now at the local level, and I really, really do enjoy it, and so I appreciate that. So thank you so much, Mayor, and council and everyone. I do want to say very happy birthday to our own, she just had a birthday, Patricia Ock.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday. As well as District 3, Barry Krebs, he just had a birthday as well, and congratulations on your award. And then also, I really enjoyed to piggyback off of what Councilman Davis was saying about GMA. It's always a wonderful experience, you know, to go there and to network with so many different cities and city officials. And it was also great to see our very own charismatic mayor going up to show our flag. He was really excited about doing that. He had a good time. We capture the essence of what he does best, and so that was a lot of fun. And then, of course, you know, obviously being a city of ethics, we had a lot of great speakers there and a great, a lot of, some key takeaways and highlights that we had at the conference was a gentleman that was there. His name is Malcolm. He spoke about our literacy rates being so low. And it was, it really touched me because we have a lot of work that we need to do in being there and supporting our youth. And so we really need to continue to partner with the library and ensure that we, you know, work with them and our school systems to help Georgia. He has a program called Georgia Reads, and so that is very important. We have to get more involved in that and partnering with, again, like our school systems, our educators, to ensure that Georgia does not remain 42 when it comes to our literacy rates. We're way down. So again, let's continue to, you know, partner and be a part of that. And then lastly, I want to thank Poder Latinx with wanting to work with the city and partner with us on supporting our Latinx X community here in Mableton, and that's all I have. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ock.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson.
This is surreal because a year ago, I was in this conversation, and we were talking about the GMA conference, and I actually thought that going this year was going to be like, woo, GMA! But what I will tell you is, while I took some classes that were the exact same class, fresh anointing was what I received, so I was extremely, extremely impressed. I'm always extremely impressed with the way that GMA runs that conference. And I was trying to look it up really quick, but the biggest takeaway that I had from the conference was actually with the, in our general session, and one of the keynote speakers. And while we exit out of men's mental health month, the big thing that he brought up was the whole concept of mental health, the whole concept of understanding your mental health and doing something about it. And the big thing that he was talking about, and he was a, he's now a New York Times bestselling author, because he wrote a book about the 100 things that you want to do before you die and then going out and doing it. And what I saw and what I heard in his time up there on stage, you have these 100 things, and yet one of your 100 things might be skydiving, or it might be going to talk to Oprah, or whatever it is. But they also took the time, every time they crossed one off, to do something for somebody else. And when you have the opportunity to do something for that somebody else, then your stretch gets that much larger, because then they go do something for somebody else, and it just continues down that pipe. So that was the biggest takeaway for me, is start thinking about the 100 things, and actually me and Councilwoman Jeffcoat actually made the comment, what are the 100 things that we want to do within the city of Mableton before we either leave office or before we get pushed out of office? But, excuse me, that's where we are now. What are those 100 things that we want to do for this city? What are those 100 things that I want to do for myself before I expire? So I offer that up to you all as a thought process. His name on Instagram is B E N N E M I E M T I N. Ben Minnington? Yeah. I encourage you to go look him up if you didn't get that when I just said it. Come ask me, and I'll tell you. But go look it up. Go look at his website. Go look at the things that they're doing, and be really concerned about your mental health and how you continue to grow and nurture yourself. That's all.
Councilwoman Hardin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be very short. During the GMA conference, we, of course, learned about human sex trafficking and labor trafficking, and Georgia ranks about seven in that area. And so I was given some really good, like, tools to use. And the number one is, the number one thing is just to be aware, you know? Just be aware of your community. Be aware when something seems like it's not normal. You know, there was a story that was told about a home that looked very normal on the outside, and code enforcement was finally able to get in, and there were 10 rooms that were made just with drywall with padlocks on them, where, you know, a number of Hispanic men were being held captive, and they would all go on, you know, in a van together and work, and they would all come back. So, you know, they were giving, you know, tips on just being aware. When something seems odd, you know, just maybe, a lot of times we have this mentality, we don't want to get in anyone's business, and I understand it can be scary sometimes, but sometimes people really need help. And if you see something unusual in your community, please have the courage to at least call and try to report it. And that's it. Thank you. See something, say something, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to very quickly go over just a few things, some things that happened here locally. Last week, here in this building, actually, we had the state of South Cobb that was hosted here locally, and it was a panel, basically with myself, the mayor of Powder Springs, Al Thurman, and the mayor of Ostel, Ali Clemmons. And if you missed it, I don't know if they have it online, but it was a really great panel that was put together, was actually moderated by Dr. Boyd here. And it really showed who we are as South Cobb, as we all mature and move forward, as the community as a whole moves forward, and as the evolution of South Cobb kind of continues to grow. And obviously with the addition of the city of Mableton now being an incorporated city and being here. But we're actually able to talk about how we're going to move forward, how we're going to move forward together, how the cities are uniquely different, but also to a large extent, how we're in the same boat, so to speak. There was an interesting point that came up where the mayor of Powder Springs had talked about being on an island out in the western part of South Cobb. And then Mayor Clemmons kind of echoed the same thing. And I said, well, it's pretty ironic, because if you guys consider yourselves islands, then Mableton is the bridge, right? We're this connecting piece that's been missing because we have not been a city. So we have not, in a lot of ways, been able to chart our own destiny. But also, we have not been able to partner with the other cities about initiatives and things that are going on. We now have the capability to do so, and we look forward to doing that. I look forward to partnering with the other two mayors with other things, as well as Smyrna on issues and opportunities that we have to make us smarter, I mean, to make us smarter and better. In conjunction with that, you know, about being, the metaphor about being the bridge between the islands, this week I also found out that, I don't know if many of you know about the huge transportation project that's going on, or will be going on from 285, top end of 285, basically from right here at 20 all the way around the top end of 285 to the other side on 20. And this week, I made reference to it before, because technically the city of Mableton does not touch 285, but every single one of our corridors and thoroughfares somehow does, right? So if you look at what happens at the top end with East West Connector, and then Veras Memorial, and then down to Interstate 20. So I'd made the reference that while we don't touch Interstate, or while we don't touch 285 directly, we definitely are heavily impacted by it. And someone was listening, because I got an invite to actually join that policy working group. So Mableton will be officially represented on that. So I'm happy and proud to be able to make reference of that. There was also a continuous movement that's still being made with the South Cobb Transit Hub. This is something that's had public hearings and public input about. As the county looks to move forward, they recognize the importance of South Cobb as it relates to public transit. Public transit, I think, is very important to South Cobb and to Mableton. So with that, there's still progress that's being made on determining the exact site of where that South Cobb Transit Center is going to be. We do know it's going to be somewhere up off of East West Connector, close to Cobb Hospital being a concentration of workers and also an intersection between existing buses. And it also puts us pretty close over to Powder Springs and Ostel, so they can utilize that. I have advocated and will continue to advocate that we have a second South Cobb Transit Center closer to this area, where we know that the needs are high for people that actually use public transit. So I wanted to make sure you updated on that. And then the South Cobb Healthcare Annex, which you've heard all of us talk about at some point in time, about how important it's going to be to have, to fulfill one of the issues that we have here in Mableton, or at least, as I was saying, the southern part of Mableton, which is access to healthcare. And so inland, not too far from here, we're going to have a specific place set aside to have a healthcare annex. The details of that are still being worked through, but I do sit on the Department of Public Health, and that's something that they've been pushing very much. Our state representatives, we found out there's supporters, an effort that's supported, not only in voice, but also with dollars from both of our U.S. senators. Both Senator Warnock and Senator Ossoff, I do believe, have committed funds to help make this healthcare annex a reality. That now is moving forward into the design phase. So there is an organization that's been brought in to help actually do design what that's going to look like. My push for that is, with the healthcare annex, I want it to look inviting. Don't want it to look like many of the public healthcare centers where, let's just say, it's not appealing. So the hope around that is that it's aesthetically pleasing, and then obviously we have the type of healthcare professionals that can really provide service where it's much needed here in this part of the county. A couple of trips, GMA was mentioned. I took place in the GMA conference this year, and it was just as fantastic as it was last year. A little more for us, I think, this year, because we were able to soak it in a little more, being in office for a while. But the single most important thing that I was able to take away from it is listening to other ideas that other mayors and other councilmen have and things that they've implemented in their cities. And I don't beg, borrow, steal. If there's a good idea out there, I want it, and I want to bring it to this city. And so it's fantastic to hear all the great ideas that are out there, as well as the training classes, but really hearing about what other cities have done and their unique challenges, and how either they've overcome them or potholes that they've stepped in that hopefully we won't have to. The earlier part of that of last week, I actually spent in Kansas City with the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It's an annual conference that mayors of cities over 50,000 or 30,000 are able to attend. And in a lot of ways, it's similar to GMA, but I go to that conference as well because it is uniquely different, because groups of mayors talking about the unique challenges that we face. But it also has a lens that shifts to the federal level. So I was able to have some very good conversations with members from the White House, with members from HUD, specifically our regional director from HUD, who is newly established, who I was able to have a fantastic conversation with about things that we could do here in Mableton as it relates to. HUD has a tremendous number of programs. A lot of people think of HUD as just as housing, but there are a lot of programs they have that hopefully we can take advantage of. Also was able to meet with DOT, Department of Transportation, Department of Energy, and again, the same thing, looking at opportunities for funding that they have that we can bring directly back here to the city. Not that has to go through the state, or has to go through the county, but funds that we can look to acquire and be able to do this. I can tell you firsthand that I'm, there's mayors across the country that I know, and not just Chicago and LA and New York, there is, there are cities that are our size that are going out getting federal dollars, and I look forward to being able to do the same thing, we build up the capacity here. I think the last part of that was a lot of discussions around the bipartisan infrastructure law, opportunities for funding there, digital equity, the challenges that we have, and also affordable housing is a conversation that it seems like every city in the country is having right now. So we're not the only ones fighting this challenge when it comes to affordable housing. You know, we will continue to work to solving it, to doing the best we can. I'm still working with, with ARC. They're going to bring resources here in Mableton as well. That was committed, that they will actually serve on our, on our Mableton 2045 Steering Committee. So we'll actually have a member of ARC, which is Atlanta Regional Committee, directly working with us on that, and I'm excited about that. Lastly, I'll simply say, Councilwoman, I know you mentioned about the issues that we have in the apartment complexes, and while we haven't spoken a lot publicly about it, there's, there's a lot of effort that's already been underway, as I think some of that you know of. There will be more to kind of come out of that. There was also some very serious allegations that were made as it relates to the management of the apartment complex, and to just be very transparent about it, those are not issues that we can tackle. There are federal allegations and state allegations that were made that have to be reported to the appropriate parties, and then if investigations are, and whatnot will be done. As Councilwoman O'Donnell said, my heart goes out to them. I have made personal visits to some of the apartment complexes as well, but we have to make sure that we do the proverbial stay in our lane. But, but I want to be very clear that we are not turning a blind eye to what's happening. There is some very concrete plans that are being put in place. Actually, just today, I was speaking with the Atlanta Apartment Association, who covers the entire metro area, so had a conversation with, with their representative today to talk about potential things that we could do. And when I asked specifically for who are the managers, who are the names of the apartment complexes, is because we're doing cross-references and doing checks to make sure that we can actually bring those people together and, and have some substantial conversations. So with that being said, more to come on that topic specifically. With that, with that being said, though, I would like to now entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Make a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. All those, all those in favor of going to executive session for real estate, litigation, personnel, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, the ayes have it. We will move into executive session.
Five-minute break.
For those of y'all who will not be around afterwards, thank you. All right, everyone, welcome, welcome back. I'd like to point, I'd like to entertain a motion to close executive session.
Make a motion to close executive session.
I second.
Thank you, all, all in favor of closing executive session and return to open session, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Do we have any motions coming out of our executive session this evening?
I move that we, I move that we authorize the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form the agreement with Builders Capital Finance LLC for the purchase of property within the city located on or near Mableton Parkway for a purchase price not to exceed 1.375 million.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of moving forward with the agreement with KO Management, Inc., for the purchase of property within the city of Mableton located on or near Puckett Drive for the purchase price... No, I get to skip, sorry. My apologies. All those in favor of allowing the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form the agreement with Builders Capital Financial LLC for the purchase of the property with, located within the city of Mableton, on or near Mableton Parkway for a purchase price not to exceed 1.375 million dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let it be known, there's one nay vote, that was Councilwoman Al. The motion passes. Thank you. The floor is open. We have another motion.
I move that we authorize the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form the agreement with KO Management, Inc., for the purchase of property within the city located on or near Puckett Drive for a purchase price not to exceed 800,000.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. I'll call the question. All those in favor of allowing the mayor to finalize and execute in substantial form an agreement with KO Management for the purchase of a property within the city of Mableton located near Puckett Drive for a purchase price not to exceed 800,000, please say aye. All opposition, please say no.
No.
There is one opposition. Madam Clerk, note that it's Councilwoman Al. The motion passes. Thank you.
I move that we authorize the mayor to finalize and execute an additional lease agreement for a second suite at 6116 Mableton Parkway within the parameters of the approved spending plan.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
Motion being made and duly seconded. Is there any, any, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll move to vote. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute an additional lease agreement for the second suite at 6116 Mableton Parkway within the spending, within the parameters of the current spending plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it. Thank you. Please note, Madam Clerk, that it has been approved. Any more motions before us this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
No motions. Any more city business that lies before us? Hearing no more city business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.